And we'll be notified as line officer to enter the council meetings to adjust that agenda. Agenda please, silence all electronic devices. Denial number one called for one. Denial two, stand for the pledge. Mr. Brown.
I pledge my pledge.
Sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Gordon.
Here.
Mr. Hubble.
Here.
And Lacy.
Here.
Mr. Bier.
Here.
Denial four, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of September fourteen twenty three. I'm open. Second. I got a motion by Councilman Lee, three second left, Councilman LeBron. Any objections? You're in. Denial five, public comments. Comments from the public allow me call for the recent advice captured forty-two, code in the relevant section two to thirty-four. And specifically, the amendment is going general, I think it should be considered on video. Three minutes per person and fifteen minutes per topic. I know one besides you. Denial six, here from Mr. David, acting superintendent of West Vander's Schools concerning the upcoming tax election.
Thank you, Mayor, council members, thank you for allowing us to be here. I'd like to introduce a few people if I may. Two of our board members are here, Ms. Terry Marion, who is our at-large member representing the entire parish. Mr. Ronald Blue Blong, who represents part of Port Allen. Two of our staff people here, Dr. Tammy Senter, who takes care of all of our technology and make sure that I'm doing this right. And Mr. Jared Gibbs, who is our chief financial officer, he takes care of all of the money. And we'll do our best to answer any questions that you have after the presentation. So we'll begin. Can you click it to make it? As you all know, we have an election on November the eighth that contains quite a few state and local issues. It would be a big ballot. On that ballot is a fifteen mil property tax renewal that was first passed in the nineteen sixties and has been renewed every ten years since. It's a fifteen mil property tax and in nineteen, in two thousand and twenty-one, it brought in eight point five million dollars, which is approximately twenty percent of our general fund. I don't know what the general fund for the city of Port Allen is, but I would imagine it would be a little difficult to operate on twenty percent less. And that's what we're facing at this point. We feel like this is a tremendously important issue. I know, I know the mayor knows and all of you know that the future of our parish and the future of our city is dependent upon the quality of education, how young people get. It's relatively simple. In the last twenty years, our school district has made great strides. I'm proud of that because I was part of it. But I give all of the credit to our teachers and administrators. It's, I shudder to think of what would happen if we don't pass this thing. So I humbly ask all of you to help us with this. As you know, in March, it failed by one vote. It was like a Katrina, it was a perfect storm. It was the only thing on the ballot. We did not do a good job of pushing it as a school system. We took it for granted that the people of West Vander's Parish would pass it because they always have. And we learned, Dr. Senter says, we learned a very valuable civic lesson. Every vote counts. Because we lost that by one vote, as you all probably know. So with that, let me move forward a little bit. This is a renewal, it is not a new tax. It doesn't cost anymore to pass this thing than what you're presently paying. As a matter of fact, you're going to end up paying less and I'll show you that in a little bit. How is this money used? It's used for teacher salaries and benefits, safety, security and school resource offices, maintenance of facilities, utilities and educational technology. One of those items is underlying school resource offices. That will be a new expense for us. It'll be in the neighborhood of seven hundred thousand dollars a year. We presently have eight school resource offices. We have ten schools and we will hire two more once those two are identified as being suited to work on the school campus. Major Semino is helping us with that. Seven of the eight are West Vander's Parish deputies and one is from the city of Port Allen, Mr. Christen. And we appreciate having those folks. It's a sad day, but it is a realistic day that we need police officers on our school campuses. Our kids are almost valuable commodity and we don't want any of them harmed or hurt. And as I tell them, the officers every day, if you see somebody coming to that door with a weapon, act first. Don't act second, act first. Enough about that. Early voting will begin on Tuesday, October the twenty-fifth. And it will end the following Tuesday, November the second. It includes Saturday, October the twenty-ninth. Early voting can take place in two places, in Brulee, at the Waterworks District Building, which is right next to their administrative building, and at the registrar of voters office in Port Allen, in the courthouse there next on Seventh Street. We would love for you to help us with this. We would love for you to ask people to vote early. I would say vote early and often, but that wouldn't work. But to vote early, we want to make sure that we get people out to vote. We believe, and I believe, I was born and raised in this city when it was a town. And I believe that the good people of this city and the good people of this parish will pass this thing. We simply have to do our work and ask them to do it and explain to them what the money is used for. That pretty much sums up what we're trying to do. This particular slide doesn't have anything to do with the tax election itself, but it does have to do with how much, how many dollars you pay in taxes. You know that when we passed a nine million dollar building project issue, that we went through bonds to do that. And we have bonded indebtedness, which is how we pay back the bonds, through millages. Before August the seventeenth, we paid twelve point four five, when I say we, I'm talking about the citizens. We paid twelve point four five mils for the bonded indebtedness. In August, our school board unanimously, without question, took one point two billion dollars out of the sales tax revenue and put it down on the bonded indebtedness, reducing what we owe, which also reduced the millage that we owe. So we now have a millage rate of nine point nine six for this particular issue. So even if this issue renewal passes, your taxes will go down because you have fewer bills, fewer bills to pay now on the bonded indebtedness. So with that, I'll entertain any questions that any of you may have or anyone from the audience, if that's permissible, Mayor. Anybody have any questions about any of this?
Mr. Brown, it's so, with the drop from, I mean, this just goes toward the indebtedness.
Right.
Correct. It won't affect it. It'll still be twenty percent of your.
It still will be, yes, sir, yes, it will. It will. On the average of about a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar house. There, correct me if I'm wrong. If you pay taxes on approximately a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar house, you should see a reduction in your taxes of about fifty-four dollars a year. And, oh, let me, there were some other things I wanted to mention to you though. And I apologize for forgetting this. The millage rates that go to education in West Vander's Parish over the last five years have gone down. In two thousand and eighteen, the millage rates for education in West Vander's Parish was sixty point one nine. Two thousand and nineteen, fifty-eight point one four. Two thousand and twenty, pandemic, it remained the same, fifty-eight point one four. Two thousand and twenty-one went down to fifty-five point eight four. And now it's fifty-three point three five with what the board, with the action that the board took in August. So our millages have continued to go down. I also want you to know that when you look at a name parish region or nine parish region, the people who collect the most bills are St. John Parish, seventy-eight point seven two. Zachary Community Schools collects sixty-seven point two. Central Community Schools selects, collects sixty point oh eight bills. Where next? No, I'm sorry, Elviville is next, fifty-five point eight three. And then West Vander's fifty-three point three five, followed by St. James, forty-four point eight three, followed by EBR, forty-one point two five, St. Landry, forty-one point oh four, West Feliciano, thirty-three point nine six, which might be a little bit misleading because they built all of their buildings when they had the nuclear plant, just money poured in as a result of that through sales tax. So we're just about in the middle on school millage rates. We feel like our board has been a good steward of the tax dollar and will continue to be. So with that, if anyone has any questions.
Just real quick, I, that's been the biggest complaint I've gotten. People are under the assumption that the millages are still at six, you know, at six total. And I, I'm glad you said that. So now I can give an educated opinion on it. Because, I mean, they have dropped nearly seven, seven mil.
You, are you, you're familiar with the Vision West?
Yeah.
Okay, that, that chart is going to be in, on our page in Vision West. It'll have the millages, the reduction in millages, as well as the surrounding parishes with millages. Apparently, there's been a lot of misinformation running around about lots of things. That's why we're here and that's why we speak to every one of our faculties, all of the councils, Brulee, Port Allen, Addis, going tomorrow night to the parish council meeting, a week and a half from now, the chamber meeting. We're trying to get the accurate word out. But I appreciate your comments on that.
Could you take it back to the other slide, come and where he said, where he pointed out what the funds are used for?
Sure.
I think this is where a lot of the issues are coming in with, with, with this passing of the tax. The last tax that was passed, in that tax, Brulee, they received a new school. And it had some additions to the other schools. And I just know that the citizens weren't quite happy with it. And don't really understand how these funds being dispersed equally throughout the schools, throughout the parish. And, and I see it say the maintenance of facilities. Well, Port Allen Elementary, I know for a fact, has so many renovations that need to be done. And it's been for a very long time.
They're going to be done. If you're speaking of the lighting, we're in the middle of a grant to get the lighting.
Cafeteria.
Yeah.
The lighting. So it's like, you don't understand where, and even with the schools, like some of the, the needs of the schools, personally, I don't even understand where the school board kick in, to be honest.
Have you seen the new head start building on Burberry?
Yes, I saw that.
That's, that's one part that's, that's been new.
I also saw the new school that was built at Brulee as well.
Yeah.
That came through, I saw that as well.
Right. Have you been to Port Allen High School lately?
Yes, I saw additions to that.
Well, not only the additions, but the renovations inside the school. They, and I'm, I'm not trying to blow smoke here, I'm telling you my accurate feeling. I'm a Port Allen High School graduate of the old school, nineteen sixty-six. So that's my school. The new, the new Port Allen High School, I would invite you and encourage you, each of you and everyone here, to go see that school. It is phenomenal on the interior. They did a complete renovation as well as at the theater. The, the Port Allen High School.
And legions.
I'm sorry?
Where it's new.
A second gym?
A land room.
I was not here when all of that was taking place. So I'm not as versed, well-versed as, as others are. But I can tell you, I've been there. The interior of Port Allen High is phenomenal, in my view. I think it's wonderful. They did it. I couldn't believe it when I walked in, knowing what the old school looked like. I thought the old school looked good, the old Port Allen High. I say the old school, I'm talking about on the new campus. But they renovated the inside to a degree, I encourage you to go. I encourage you to go see for yourself. Because it is very, very nice.
And they had a new roof also, and you don't see that.
Yeah.
But it costs a lot of money.
But I'm saying, do you see the comparison just of that with Brulee having a whole new school? I'm just trying to let you see for what the citizens.
I understand.
That's where our population growth is too. And like right now, we are outgrowing one of the schools down there. I mean, I think we have adequate facilities here in Port Allen to meet the needs of our children. Does Port Allen Elementary need some renovations? Yes, and we've addressed it and.
We've done it.
Mr. Eric O'Wisham, just the other night at a board meeting, writing down different things that she wanted to see done. But without the tax pass, and you can't bite off and say, I'm going to spend another two hundred thousand dollars a year.
And I can't emphasize enough that we're talking about a renewal. We're not talking about a new tax. We're talking about a renewal. And Miss Lacy, I clearly understand where you're coming from as a citizen of Port Allen and what the citizens of Port Allen see.
And I think that's from the lack of education and them having that, that understanding how the funds are being distributed equally. And to be able to buy into this tax and, you know, based on what they witnessed before. And that's why I'm kind of telling you where you may have, where you may have some challenges.
I could speak to two thousand and four, to two thousand and fourteen, because I was superintendent of schools and I can look you directly in the eyeball and tell you, everybody got the same thing. They may not have got it, all the same, exact thing, but everybody got what they needed. We worked real hard to have that happen. And in two thousand and four, our school district had an educational grade that was equated to a D, as in David. When I left in two thousand and fourteen, we had a good, strong B. And that's not because of David Corona. That's because of the good people that teach in our schools every day. And they continue to do a good job. If you go back and look at the teacher salaries and benefits, which is one of the things that this, these fifteen bills pays for, it pays for all of those things, parts of all of those things. But if you want to equate it to a number of teachers, if you take a teacher who has twelve years of experience, who, who chooses to take the family insurance plan, that teacher costs our system eighty-five thousand dollars. The reason it's so much is, when the retirement system began, employees contributed eight percent and employers contributed eight percent. Over the years, the actuaries determined that the retirement systems could not prevail with that. The school systems had to kick in, the employers, school systems had to kick in more. Today, we kick in twenty-four point eight percent of our employee salaries go to retirement. Eight percent goes from the employer, the employer E. So it, it costs a lot. So if you take that particular teacher, twelve-year veteran teacher with a bachelor's degree who takes the family insurance plan, which we pay part of and we pay their Medicare, it costs us eighty-five thousand dollars for that teacher. Well, simple math, how many teachers account for eighty point five million dollars? One hundred. Now that's not to say we're going to lose one hundred teachers, because there's a lot of things we're going to lose. But we're going to lose some teachers. And that will be the downfall of our public school system, in my opinion. We can't afford to lose that. I'm asking for your help. I'm asking for your neighbors' helps, your, your spouse, your parents, your children, your church members. We need to get this done. Our children in this parish deserve no less. Your children and your grandchildren deserve no less than the absolute best. And I get that.
Can I, can I address? Okay. Do we know we have some issues here in Port Allen we got to take care of? Yeah, we heard it loud and clear at Port Allen High. And we're going to address, right now we're working at Cawn. We've got some air conditioning issues, we've got roofing issues, we've got the insurance companies coming in. And we know we got some things we need to do at Classroom. I talked to the board president last night, he didn't realize a couple of things didn't happen during the bond issue, like painting and stuff like that. We got to take care of that. We got to clean it up, we got to make it presentable, okay? As far as the north end, I heavily supported that. Both of those schools out there were shot, they were done. And the last bond issue we had, which was probably twenty years or so ago, we did very little out there. Those schools were done. So they had, we had to build them, we didn't have a choice on that one. If you take Port Allen Middle, it's on national historical record. You can't really do a whole lot with that. You can renovate it inside, but you got to be careful what you're doing. So are we going to look at Port Allen Elementary in Cawn? You better believe it, it's out on my plate, I can tell you that right now. I've always had problems with those buildings in the back, paint-stained roofs. And I made it clear, but they said the roofs will hold up. Well, they didn't hold up, okay? We got to do some work. And that, that's my pledge. I'm going, we, I'm going to stand, stand steadfast and get things done at Port Allen Middle, at Port Allen Elementary and Cawn. And yeah, we hear it. Or do I hear it? And you're right, it does look good when you go down to Brulee and you see a brand spanking new school. They do have the population growth and it's continuing to grow down there. So, yeah, heard it loud and clear, believe me.
And another thing that's not so visible on Port Allen Middle and High, we replaced all the windows in those schools. And that was costly, but they were leaking, they were getting water in the walls and were, I mean, just for electricity, electricity purposes only, you know. It doesn't look like a lot, but we spent a lot of money doing that.
It looks like we might have to do some of the air conditioning system in Cawn too. Because they can't get the forks and stuff anymore. So we're going to have to do something. If we get the money, we're going to do it. I'm telling you, we're going to do it. So, please, tell the people we're going, we're going to do whatever we can. And if we ever want to answer also the project bond, you can tell people this. The way that works is you can only collect that which pays your bill. And then what happens over time, the assessments go up, they go up. Well, you collect more money, but I can only collect that which pays that bill, so you can drop your millages. So over time, you're going to see that project bond bill is continuing to drop, 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 till it's off. And we'll be done with that, so.
There are a lot of people, just what you just said, put so simply, a lot of people don't understand.
And are not aware of it.
And that's why a lot of misinformation is coming.
Please, thank you. I appreciate it.
Yeah.
I will, I will tell you this.
I mean, I just want, wanted you all to be clear, you know, to be able to understand, and there are a lot of misconceptions. Like, and, and that is what is really people looking at. I, I, I tell you what, I listen.
Miss Lacy, help us clear it up. Help us clear it up. If you need me to come anywhere, talk to anybody, be happy to do that.
Tell them to come talk to us, please. They see things they want done in the school, they see it, tell them to come talk to us. We got a heck of a good maintenance superintendent now and that young man has jumped on some issues we have with Port Allen Middle on the back of their gym. Like a jungle was growing on top of that. He said he had like trees and stuff like that, got all cleared away. We did about a fifty thousand dollar job redoing all that roof and getting it done correctly. So we got a good man. So if you, if you know us or things, please get it to us. So we can get him out there to take a look at and just, just fix things up.
Is that man he's talking about? Port Allen High School graduate. That man right there? Port Allen High School graduate. That lady right there? Port Allen High School graduate. This guy right here? Port Allen High School graduate. You think we're not going to try and take care of Port Allen?
We're going to take care of Port Allen.
I guarantee you, if you got the rights, you're going to have a superintendent, I'll be here through May probably. And we're going to get stuff done, I promise you. And I'm not trying to say that Port Allen's been neglected, because I don't think they have. But I'll tell you this, we got some things we need to do here, and we're going to get them done.
He's just adding on a fifty thousand dollar outside classroom.
It's in the process right now.
He said, I'm going to do it. I'm going to get your vote, I'm going to take care of this, we're going to get it done. He said these people need that.
So Port Allen Middle, it's, it's going to be a good night.
Our kids need that. And you don't see how happy our kids are. You don't see how happy the teachers are to see them going up. Knowing that they, their kids behave and, and every, any day, every day, they have opportunities to take them out to the outdoor classroom and do some things. Kids will have a place to congregate, eat lunch, it's going to be very nice. Kids will have a place to congregate, eat lunch, it's gonna be very nice. It's gonna be very nice. I encourage you, I encourage you to go to our schools. Particularly if you feel like nothing was done at Port Island High other than the D. Go look in the middle of them. Go in. Go to, go look at that headstock building that's exclusive at Port Island Elementary. Uh, we're gonna pretend to do things, but we've done that. And I don't wanna hold your being up any longer, but I do want you to know that, um, we need for this to happen. And we're gonna continue making progress educationally, because that's what it's all about. Is getting our kids educated so that their future is better than that. That's what it's all about. Anyone else have any questions that I can answer?
I do quit it. Excuse me. Greetings. I, I'm not from Port Island, but I've, I've spoken with community leaders, I've made my presence at the schools prior to this meeting. And I wanna add on to what Councilman Lacy said. You have to understand that, you know, from the side of the, the corporate side of what you're saying, you know, I'm looking at the teacher salary, the benefits, you know, uh, building the, building in the back, which I'm, and the community nor, and I'm pretty sure they understand as well, they recognize the work that's being done. It's not, that's not going unnoticed. But when you have the community, which don't, majority don't come to the council, the majority not hearing what you're saying, when you say, hey, well, the teachers won't get paid this, 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 they're looking at, okay, well, hey, if we say that education is the, the main priority, you got the high school, yeah, congratulations, and I, I, I really feel like they did a great job, I looked at it. But the foundation is elementary. So if I have my, my, my kid in there, and the roof is leaking, uh, yeah, I want her to get paid more. But there's no way they can understand and be ready to go to the middle school or the high school that you, uh, renovated first. So I agree with everything you're doing, but from a community standpoint, that's how, so when they look at that tax and they go to vote, they're like, well, my baby lives, and then they got stuff dripping from the roof, not voting on that. Well, you know, I think that's a pretty, pretty from the roof, yeah.
You know, and, and that came out at the last, Port Island High. And the lady said, she said, I walked through that school, she said, I'm, I'm not gonna send my child here, there's no way.
Right.
Then she said, until I met the teachers and the administrators there. She said, when I met those people, I knew my child was coming here. She said, yeah, it doesn't look like I want it to look, but she said, y'all got some top-notch teachers and administrators. And we do. Got a heck of a fine principal over there, and we got some really good teachers, so. Yeah, we, we need to get better and get the building up to snuff. But, uh, thank God for our administrators and our teachers.
You mentioned that elementary is where it's at, and you're right. Did you know where it's really at? Headstock, pre-k, before they get to elementary. Uh, I won't go into my spiel about kids being ready on the first day of first grade, but there's a, there's a lot. One day I come back, I'm talking to you.
Thank you, boss.
Yeah, that, that, but go, go see how many school districts have headstock? There's not many. We're one of them, because we know where it starts. This young man, as you all know, he's from Rayville. And he's come to Port Island because we've been, what, three, four years in the loop?
I let it go.
Three years. For the state championship, let me mention, for the state championship, uh, group lecture here. And you'll find the man, it's a pleasure to meet you.
And I appreciate that, yeah.
And I, I wish you well.
Yes, sir.
And you get hired, come see me, we'll drink some coffee, you know, we'll go visit some schools and all of that.
Yeah, man, I, I acknowledge the work that y'all are doing. Don't take, don't take my, my, my time.
No, I understand, I'm with, I'm with, I'm with, and I'm with Ms. Lacy, I understand what the people in Port Island see. Uh, you know, I, born and raised for first ten years of my life on Georgia Street, and I was on Avenue L, so I, you know, I, I've been around here a little while.
He's the author of the headstock for West Baton Rouge, he's the one that brought it, he brought it here in the school system. He's the one that went to federal government, our elected officials, and.
And my daughter, my daughter went to headstock.
Yeah.
Now, I wasn't too pleased with having to have to pay, some people have to pay to go to headstock.
Well, if you make, if you make over, let me explain to you. We moved headstock down to almost exclusively for three-year-olds. And if you, we, we wanna work on the lower half of the three-year-olds, the kids that have less than what they should have. So if the parents make a certain amount of money, the kids who are poor are gonna get in first. Do I like that? I understand it. Because we're limited with the number of kids that we can bring in. Uh, but to bring in our three-year-olds so that we can work on them, get them ready for the first day of first grade, is huge. Uh, again, I could, I could go on about this first grade thing for years. If, if you, if you have a six-year-old that's ready for first grade on, on day one, he will thrive, his, he will thrive forever. Unfortunately, if they're not ready, they're gonna struggle and struggle and struggle. And they're gonna hear, no baby, no baby, no baby, no baby, as opposed to, yeah, that's good, you're doing good, that's right, you're doing good. That works on a child's mentality. I, I'm gonna stop, cause I could go on for a long time, but I just, it's vital, it's vital to children. Uh, it's vital to this community. This is how the West Louisiana community has gotten to be the third highest-ranked district in the state with a significant at-risk population. We also have a significant at-risk population. They've had headstock almost forty years. We've had it for maybe twelve, maybe thirteen, fourteen, I, I forget, I'm old. Uh, but anyway, we, we're getting there. We're getting there. But I appreciate all of you, and I'll really appreciate you if you help us. Uh, please help us, we need it, our community needs it. Thank you very much. Any other questions? Thank y'all, thank you so much.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
All right, that's Virginia, ten nine seven, consider authorizing Mary to contract with CPA firm Provost Salter, Hopper, and Hopper LLC for city's annual audit pursuant to their proposed engagement letter for a fee of eighty thousand. Mr. Kent? Kent?
Good evening, everybody. I'm actually really excited to see y'all, because usually Kent Alford's in front of y'all, and he's on vacation. So, what I did was, I printed out copies of the initial report for both the audit, who say Y A U P, let all copies. Um, I also attached our peer review report that was published, I think, last week on October third. Basically, every three years is a requirement for CPA firm that does audits. We have to be audited by another auditing firm. You can either have a grade or pass, pass with deficiencies or fail, we pass. So, I don't know if there's any questions that I can answer on here. No, it's a good feeling whenever you get audited and you pass.
I just know my eighteen years on the council. Provost Salter, Hopper and Hopper.
Okay, the council, have any questions? On those? Second. There are motion by councilwoman here, second by councilwoman Brown. Any objections? Here and now?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Lauren?
Yes.
Mr. Hubbell?
Yes.
Ms. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Revere?
Yes.
Both passes.
Thank you.
Thank y'all, appreciate y'all's time.
All right, y'all. Virginia, eight, consider approving a request to be subdivide lots four, five, six, seven, eight, and nine, the square eighteen of Con subdivision to lots seven A and eight A to accommodate a profit exchange between adjacent property owners for purposes of removing enclosures. Mr. Cleveland, Mike Wong?
Good evening, how you doing? Please, Mike Wong, five things in, so there's a lot, so here tonight to represent, uh, both, uh, Port Island, uh, Louisiana, and also to, uh, Intercoastal Barge. And that, there, it was a building, it was about three feet over the line, and they had been trying to come up with an agreement to, uh, just purchase five feet in the rear to kinda make it, um, kinda settle it up. Well, the building was up for sale, and the sale was coming, so they kind of rushed this through. And so what happened is lot eight, seven, eight and nine, I'm sorry, now combined in the eight A with, with five feet of lot six and seven in the, from the rear. Um, this was just an exchange between property owners. Um, and it's right here across the street, so if you have any questions, I'll, I'll be glad to entertain them. Also, to just let you know, and I, I would tell us the data that we left, you have a really good, um, thing you can use here in your partner, if you can go, actually go on an assessor site, click on your property, and then go to where it says tax validation, and look at it, it'll tell you the bills and how much you actually paid for just the school, for just the levy district, for just the, uh, police and fire and all that. He breaks it all down, so you can see all of that on there. And it's really helpful this time of the year, people, especially when somebody's asking for a tax, so. And I told us the data I was gonna vote for, but I, I, we won't tell them that.
So this property is the old, that is the building?
Yes, sir.
And the properties that's adjacent, what, is that the?
Excuse me?
The properties that involve adjacent properties, is that the, uh?
Yes, it's Ross and Phillips, and, yes, sir. And I have, I have a, uh, um, we got him to sign an affidavit, um, we talked to Mr. Joseph about it. So we got him to sign an affidavit from future Port Island and Intercoastal Tully Barge. Intercoastal Tully Barge is right, it was listed to lotion, so, uh, yes.
Do we have a copy of it?
Yes, ma'am, I emailed one, but this is your copy, the, the copy with the maps that need to be signed, I'll leave it with you since he stepped out. And, uh, so if you have any questions, uh.
No questions? No questions, anything more?
Second.
Motion by councilwoman here, second by councilwoman. Gordon, any objections? Here and now?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Lauren?
Yes.
Mr. Hubbell?
Lacy? Yes.
Mr. Revere?
Yes.
What should I ask, sir?
You've been submitting a map for the council signature and all that.
There's the maps, uh, there's three maps and signatures, and it's also the, uh, letter that's, uh, notarized from the, uh, forty's involved. Yes. Okay. Thank y'all, y'all mind my step out, I got a grandchild playing some, what's called, the first one's still holding the show. I haven't seen it in a while.
All right.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. All right, going on to Virginia, nine nine, see the approval expenses for Small Business Saturday event in the amount of two thousand dollars to be held on November twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two. Ready to go?
Um, this event is the first time that they will be holding Small Business Saturday in the city of Port Island, so it does start around the parish. And they did say, they, they called it an after-party, but it's really where all the other businesses that will have set up during the day will actually come and set up in, in Port Island that evening for purposes. So it does help increase, increase our tax dollars, uh, as far as we will be the culminating event down here, I think. Uh, from what I'm understanding, it will be set up in front of Milelos, in front of Sosies, uh, another spot further down, one spot in the, um, western area of the, the parish, and then we're gonna be the culminating event. And so that's why they were asking for a little help to, uh, provide the vans. The parish is coming in and kicking in with a stage and some chairs and tables and some other stuff. And we'd already agreed to, to partner with them on some things that will not cost anything. So it just would be great for us to, to partner and support our Small Business Saturday, and it will help our taxes.
Who's here, Ms., Ms. Rowan?
It's the Small Business Council of the Chamber of Commerce.
Yeah, I believe it's a good time, because when, when you look at it, because they, they make a route out of it, and the participants have to punch a card to say they visited here and there. I know we're gonna have.
Door prize? Door prize?
We're gonna have a door prize?
Door prize.
I know that we are planning anyways from fifteen to twenty-five vendors on the front of the lot. And the way I look at it, um, for that Saturday, of course, it's following Black Friday. You're gonna be able to keep the people on this side of the river instead of going over there.
Uh, Small Business, Small Business Saturday is a national day that's recognized right after Black Friday for the communities to come in and support, uh, small businesses. So it's a great thing for folk, and if anybody else has some other folk that they want to, that we know that have a small business, I'd be glad to put them in touch with, uh, the, the chairman of the group, so they can actually set them up. So it's an exciting day, um, that we're actually doing it in Port Island, and I think it'll be a great coverage as far as doing it, and it'll just help us to, to grow. And I'm just excited to be a part of it, because normally they would have held it on the, um, the southern end of the city and actually come down here. So it'll take place on our streets between, uh, Jefferson and Seventh Street, so it'll be an outside event.
I make a motion?
Second. Uh, one other question before we do this, uh, port invasions, who's?
We've kind of committed to do port invasions.
So that's coming out this too?
Yes. No, not like this, we've already committed to do the port invasions, the parish is doing the staging and, 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 yes.
Okay, that's expensive.
Yes, sir. Normally what we would have done to help folk with their, um, parades, same thing that we would have done with, with the parades or with the block party.
So how many port invasions have you listed, Nate?
Four. Four? They did, I think.
Is there any other expenses?
No, sir. Ma'am, how do you feel about this? Have you still want the property?
Oh, that's good for the community, I just want it to be a better, you know, there's other expenses. Cause that's another thing that we have to look at going forward, we have a lot of events coming up. And the city's paying the expense of all these events. And that might gotta come out of, of somewhere. So it, it, it gonna come out of community development, so.
Definitely.
You're saying two thousand dollars, so that's another, the spend does come out of community development.
Right, this was for the van, and it would be something in the city, Port Island, it's not like we're sending it outside the city. Um, and also, um, I know when we do other events, we provide the, the, for, for lets and things for folks, so.
Where it comes out, you bring that up, and you have. Yeah, the only other thing is when this is just made, when somebody's asking for money, they need to at least be here to ask for it.
I didn't ask them to come, because they were meeting today, so that's my, that I take it.
Well, no, I mean, that was last week too. That was last week too, that's one problem.
Because I had been meeting with them, so I kinda came, because I was part of the committee, so I apologize if you wanted the chairman here. We can, we can get her here, uh, for the next meeting. No, it would be no problem, because they didn't have a problem with it, I just go like, you know, I don't, this is because I've been meeting with them. I think Ms. Gordon had made the motion, Mr. Brown made the same.
Okay, I got a motion by councilwoman Gordon, second by councilwoman Brown. Any objections? Here and now?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Lauren?
Yes.
Mr. Hubbell?
Yes.
Ms. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Revere?
Yes.
Virginia, ten, consider approving financial assistance in the amount of five thousand dollars to save our sons committee for the annual Black History Month parade to be held in February of twenty twenty-three.
Yes, sir, this was one that, um, I had spoken with Mrs. Lauren about, and when I reminded him the day of, I come to the night, he was not able to get the time to do it, so he, he may want to table that, but it's the same one that he does every year. He really wanted to plan early, uh, for Black History and get whatever funding he can get from the city. So, uh, if, I mean.
We missed all of him three thousand the last time, didn't we?
Mr. Hubbell said that he wanted the, a rep here, so, I mean, we can table it if you want to and, and ask him to come and talk.
What, what is the total amount to be spent on the parade? Not, not what you're asking for here, but I mean, to talk.
I, I can't answer it, because I'm not in the inner workings, and he would have to be the one to ask for it. I do know that he has, he had stated that it was for vans and insurance.
I still say that we should come to an agreement on how much money we would, um, allow out to each organization. Yes, council membership, uh, come up with that. Just set a, a set price, where we give out.
So what we're saying, we need him to come and talk to y'all?
I don't need him to come and talk, I mean, because we know what he wants. It's the idea, what are we gonna give him?
I see that five dollars seems excessive, but it's just me.
But we had agreed that three thousand the last time, so is he willing to take the three thousand? Cause I know last year he didn't want the three thousand. So, um, is he willing to take the three thousand that we're offering him, or, or what?
I will take directions from you, I can't speak.
I mean, you spoke with him, so I don't know what he told you.
Yes, I did not ask him that question.
Okay.
Because he called me, but I will contact him and ask him, and then we can probably take it up at the committee meeting if that's, if that's. Because he called me, but I will contact him and ask him, and then we can probably take it up at the committee meeting if that's, if that's what you're saying.
I guess, when we, when we get into these parades, and of course I'm involved in them, uh, I think we need to kind of set some kind of parameter on these things, because we're just, you know, a lot of people are coming to Port Allen for money, 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 and I think you're gonna open up a pan of wood, watch you kind of get it shut, you know? But I'm, I'm just gonna give you, and this is public knowledge, on the Veterans Day Parade, which I chair, to date, I have received four hundred dollars. I have paid out three hundred ninety-three dollars and nineteen cents for insurance. That leaves me some six dollars and eighty cents at this point. And what I'm doing, and I send out and I contact people for donations, I got one another in the day. But I think that needs to be done, on any event, if you believe in it, you're gonna step up to the plate, that's just my belief. Because if I don't, uh, Ms. Lacy has put on a parade with nothing. You know, so I, if you feel that strongly about something, you're gonna step up to the plate, if I don't have enough money to cover this, I'm gonna cover.
And see here.
I think, I think, I think that it's an easy out just to come to the city and start asking for money, but that's just my belief.
And Garrett, I understand you say you owe the veteran parade, me personally, I wouldn't have a problem giving a, a contribution to the veteran parade from the city. I mean, that's something that we are honoring our veterans, you know, for their life and the job that they give for our country. And, uh, I don't think no one else has a problem with, um, giving to the veteran parade.
That's good, but I'm trying to not go there.
Well, no, you go in there, you don't go there for your reason, your personal reason, but I think that you should, um, not hold your personal reason for us not to give to the veteran parade.
But I, I think that if I'm gonna do this, I need to set the example.
But that's not setting the example when you.
And she's on the committee.
Yes, I am on the committee, and I want some donation from the city.
I, I, I think I do agree that at some point we have to put a cap on, on, uh, on what we disperse and out.
Yes, I said that earlier.
And how we gonna go about that?
Take the minimum, two thousand, three thousand, or whatever, and either they get less or the max, you know? This, we all just have to come together, what we did three years.
That's the baseline, so we know that need insurance, uh, I guess the bands will be the, the barrel, whether it's two or four, but.
But they have to learn, they have to raise money too, it's just like me with our, uh, family day in the park, we go out to this money. You know, we asked all these businesses in, in West Maryland Parish to support it, because it's for the whole parish, if you wanna give a parade and you want donations, go out and ask all these people who you go patronize at their stores and stuff to give a donation.
The average bank company made five hundred dollars, I'm not sure.
I don't know.
I'm seeing that's what, what the average cost is.
Yeah, well, you know, I might have three, four bands, some, uh, parades, I mean, the correct basis, I have to stick with it.
Right, yeah, I mean, you know, we gonna have, you know you're gonna have a parade, you need to start working, just like the, uh, family in the park, we, we start working, you know? Sitting out for my tour drive, I'm asking for donations possible, you know? I don't ask the city, I just ask you all about me a talk, individual.
So, yeah, I mean, this is not the.
Right, Mary?
The item right now is for the approval, but I mean, if, just in discussion, what number y'all think, three thousand, twenty-five hundred, four thousand? What number would y'all be comfortable with, just continuing to give to the community even if it's when, if that time come?
And one thing you might want to do too is have staff go back and look at historically the number of events. Because you only have a limited budget, you only have a limit about money in that fund, and, and see how many events have y'all participated in, in the past?
We can't just say.
That might help you hone in on, okay, look, we can only have a map.
Sponsored by.
Yeah, we can only spend X amount of dollars, we want to continue doing just the same ones that we have been doing. You know, you may have different ones that pop up, so you may want to leave a cushion, uh, there to, for, for events that may come up that you want to participate in, but.
And I know the goal is for the city, uh, to not be the ones who put on events, that's like one of the big issues, the city just putting on these events that, uh, that we want to pour more into the nonprofit organizations and be an assistance to them and support them in putting on the events. But it's sometimes it's like we still putting on the events, like, if you don't know what the whole budget for the event is, uh, like some of that information we, we really don't get, and that's why I felt it was very important to have the item, the itemized list to know the breakdown of where the, the funds, you know, where they go.
Yeah, but we don't have to pay for everything, but they got five bands, bands, I don't think we should be responsible for paying for the five bands, you see what I'm saying? I mean, everybody knows, like us with the parade, our Christmas parade, Rose, have you got started?
Yes, Ms.
She also listed money for it, you know, just like the job, just for, for trend, you know, y'all do what y'all have to do, uh, to make that a, a great event, you just don't solely responsible for the city to, to sponsor your event.
I think we all agree on that, so we're just, you know, we have to figure out the number, uh, I have to pull the information, Evan said, uh.
And Rose, I think you should maybe play an intricate part in this, because this is your budget. And you know all the things you be trying to do and get knocked down.
Well, this, this is.
Well, we can agree, we need to agree on how many, um, um, uh, organizations we gonna help out for the year, if we gonna do four organizations we gonna help out, what's, or five? We need to set a, a, a number of how many we gonna help out, um.
And that includes subsidies and all the, the, that, that could be exactly.
So what we're saying on this, and we just gonna table this one, and then we're gonna have to have a special committee meeting to bring back to the committee?
Yeah, but remember, it's like the mayor said, if you're looking, and I'm just throwing this figure out there, if you're saying two thousand dollars, that's not the end result, because you've got porta potties, you've got police presence, so you've got all that adding on the top.
Whenever somebody has a parade, that those expenses cut into our, 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 our bottom line, because you're giving them the, the porta potties, and you've got the, the barricades, and you've got the, the overtime for the policemen, so all that puts into your bottom line, those expenses, so uh, that is something to look at, and we're supposed to give it back, even with the, uh, employees, if you have an event, you're gonna place some employees overtime if it's a Saturday to clean up so that it won't be a mess on the streets until Monday, so all that plays into, um, and, and, so I don't.
Well, I, I, I think, uh, it's kind of like Evan said, you need to see, I need your projection for the year, on what you intend to support out of that budget, I mean, that's just.
I think go back historically, like Evan said, with last two, two years, last three, four, five years, and see what we've done. And then, like Brandon mentioned, a baseline, see where we were then, and, yeah, just, to me, this, just five thousand dollars, just, that's just, that's a bit over the top, I mean, just with Mr. Slaughter not even being here and.
Make it three years too, because of COVID.
True, yeah, that's true.
Five years or something.
Yeah, because it's pretty wild.
Well, you know, uh, dude, I don't think Mr. Slaughter needs to really be here, because we already know what he want and what it's for. Now, we just don't have an online bill of what he paying, but, uh, Rose said he wanted for the van and the insurance. So, uh, I mean, we can table this, or we can vote on this, uh, if we give him two thousand, three thousand, I don't see five, but, you know? But we got to see if that's what he want, because we offered him that last year, he didn't accept it.
Can you put together a figure that costs for porta potties?
Yes, sir.
And any related police town or something like that, so anything that's related to that.
Would you like it for the next committee meeting?
Yeah, so, so everybody can have an idea.
Yes, sir.
What, what the city does in addition to?
To the initial amount that you're appropriate.
Yes, sir.
So what are we gonna table?
Yeah, we're gonna, yeah, we're gonna, the council's going to table this issue in the next committee meeting or next council meeting.
So we've got agenda eleven, consider approving the redistricting requirements as a result of the twenty twenty census set in place.
And just to clarify, on, on this agenda item, this, the agenda item is actually for the adoption of a resolution, uh, which will basically authorize Mr. Floyd to begin the, the process of the work of, you know, trying to redistrict, creating the maps, and like you said, you know, you can then come meet with the individuals, help the members, and the mayor.
So you signed a contract with him back during the.
You, you're, uh, does he have a contract?
He has a contract, but it was not understanding that the resolution starts the process of the, your intentions to, um, study the redistricting requirements as a result.
Does he have a contract?
It's not.
No, at, at, at last, at the committee meetings, he had, he had the resolution, so I believe this is what he's asking you to approve, the resolution that he submitted at the last meeting. It's basically that the council is recognizing that based on the results of the twenty twenty census data, when applied to your current district boundaries, the boundaries are not properly aligned at this point in time, so the boundaries have to be slightly adjusted to try to give them that ten percent uh, maximum deviation.
And for disclosure, the contract has been submitted and has not been completed review, but his proposal is this fifteen thousand dollar charge for the complete, sort of, complete package.
So when you sign that, you sign the fifteen?
Seventy-five hundred upfront, and then twenty-five hundred at each stage as the process is completed.
Does it make sure we're gonna review the contract?
Um, if you don't pass the resolution, it's moving, so you're doing an incremental.
That's something that has to be done, you know?
I got a motion by Councilwoman McGordon, second by Councilwoman Hubbell, any objections?
So this motion is to approve the resolution?
This is to approve this, uh, res, the draft resolution, uh, that had been submitted at the council meeting, the, the committee meeting.
And in fact, this redic, redistricting won't take in place until, uh, let me see, like, twenty twenty?
So he'll start the process.
I know he said, when effective elections, fear, or anything like that.
It will pro, I mean.
Twenty twenty three?
So what, whatever plan that y'all adopt, because you, you have to come back and adopt the plan, he's just, he's not gonna just give you the plan and that's what it is, the council will have to actually adopt their new, new district boundaries, uh, and I'm assuming that will be in effect for the next elections. Y'all, or y'all, the next election.
Yeah, there's, uh, motion by Councilwoman McGordon, second by Councilwoman Hubbell, any agenda?
Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. Hubbell?
Yes.
Ms. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Revere?
Yes.
Ten out of twelve, consider approving the hiring of Jamie Johnson as a police officer, step one twelve forty-eight. Forty-one thousand five hundred and seventy-three dollars and thirty-seven cents, G. Hicks not here, so we just.
Um, Chief Hicks is speaking. Take the word of the self-stating Port Allen PD standing up for Chief Hicks, uh, census regress is in, it's at a chief's conference. Uh, so as presented, I want to present Mr. Jamie Johnson for consideration to be hired as a police officer. I'm sure he's got some experience on the job, uh, passed a Jamie Williams background check, so no offense, I don't wear.
Uh, greetings, I know some of the council, uh, people in here, so I'm sorry, I met you all already, but let me say it's not your number yet. But, uh, Mayor, I appreciate the opportunity for you having me, I know you weren't here for the, I think the, when they introduced me to the council. Last week, but, uh, also Councilman Brown, and I think it's just you and the mayor that went here.
No, I was here.
You was here? You said you checked, but, no, but once again, like I said, I appreciate you guys having me back, and, uh, I don't know the result of what y'all gonna vote on, which is, because you guys don't vote on, but, uh, I'm not gonna be there waiting to say that I'm not gonna give a speech like this.
Well, you know, um, you make me feel like you're already at home when you got involved with the school situation, so.
I did it in a respectful manner, but that's because I come from a, I come from a, um, I come from a small area, it's where we get, you know, organizations like that, that come and they say, hey, I built this, do up that, but, I mean, you can't say we learned it, and I was a startup, so.
So that was an A plus for me with that, I'm like, oh wow, he's on into the school, that's, that's great, you know?
I appreciate it.
He did an awesome job last year. I was blown away, like he was on every court, community, the mental health, the, just everywhere.
And that's great, that's great.
So I move.
Well, believe it or not, Mr. Johnson, I did, uh, see you people's work video, no, I'm just.
I just went there to ask you a question.
Went viral.
Yeah.
No, I appreciate that, I, I really do, but I want, like, as the mayor, I hadn't spoken with you, but, yeah, also the council that wasn't here, weren't here before, um, the prior, within the prior, I mean, I'm not here for the, this is my, honestly, I say eight, but it's really my nine and a half year doing it. I started in two thousand eleven as a correction officer, so I, I learned from the, back then, yeah, and he probably didn't relate, yeah, I started with prison back then. So they just don't let you come to the road, so, uh, I have my youngin' on the way, I don't know gender age yet, so this is home for me, law enforcement, uh, I was on the road, I was just a company, but I'm fully staffed now, so I, I went out maybe seven months, and I came back. So that's, this is my home, and I'm gonna treat this like my home, although it's not my home yet, I, I hadn't been voted. But I want you to know, you do have my, you know, I do take full obligation and accountability to the citizens of your city, which I'm not from here, but I will treat it just like it's Rayville or Waynesville, we down there.
I don't believe you're gonna treat it like Rayville, because, you know, you beat y'all so many times.
Yeah.
They're gonna be a revenge on us. You're gonna try to revenge on us, come on, you're gonna stop everybody with a pelican shit, I'll go to the game.
But I don't, I'm not here to disturb the citizens, I'm not here to write tickets to everybody and their mother and daddy, I, I've been there before. I, my, my dad is out of me, that don't get me wrong, I will do my job, but in the same token, it's, it's about understanding, it's not about just being cruel, but in the end of the day, you do have a good individual right on the bottom of the house, you see?
What'd you do in my suit?
I was in the cleaners, you know, you know when I striped you one time.
All right, and, uh, we had a. Councilwoman Lacy, Councilwoman Revere, any objections?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Hubbell?
Yes.
Ms. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Revere?
Yes.
Ms. Gordon?
No, you said you didn't want to be called early on.
I didn't say a word, yes.
Thank you.
Welcome, thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Remember I'm watching?
I heard, I know, I only know which one I was watching the most.
This one.
All right, ten out of thirteen, authorized merely to advertise for banking part-time in two-year period position due to the reservation of Officer Ferguson.
Look, very good.
Is she still on two weeks' notice, or she gonna, she gonna?
Good evening, council. As you have been informed, um, Miss Ferguson submitted her resignation last Tuesday, and we're asking to advertise to fill that position.
I'll make a motion.
I got a motion by Councilwoman Gordon, second by Councilwoman Brown, any objections?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. Hubbell?
Yes.
Ms. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Revere?
Yes.
Multiple passes.
Ten out of fourteen, consider introduction of ordinance on employment advertising to align with the modern communication methods, Mr. Phillips.
As you may recall, we discussed this several months ago, we never got around to actually introduction of an ordinance, uh, I think it's still in the draft phase. So, um, this is where we intend to, uh, update our advertising policy, uh, to permit us to utilize internet in advertising and other methods, other forms, as opposed to strictly three weeks advertisement in the West Side Journal as current ordinance provides. This will allow us to put vacancies on our website and other, uh, internet sources, so that we can get it out faster and, and, and open ourselves up to a broader, um, audience of applicants.
Second. I got a motion by Councilwoman Lacy, second by Councilwoman Brown, any objections? You hear enough?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. Hubbell?
Yes.
Ms. Lacy?
Yeah.
Ms. Revere?
Yes.
Most of the cases.
Thank you. Then in line of fifteen, public hearing to discuss the ordinance providing for the revision of section ten to, to one of chapter ten of the Port Allen Code of Orders entitled Sales, Consumption, and Public Prohibitive Exception. For the purpose of allowing for the sale of alcoholic beverages for a designated walk-up window of property licensed establishments. Anyone from the public wish to be heard on this agenda item. No one wish to be heard, we're closed the public hearing. Then in line of sixteen, consider approving an ordinance providing for the revision of section ten to one of chapter ten of the Port Allen Code of Orders entitled Sale, Consumption, and Public Prohibited Exception for the purpose of allowing for the sale of alcoholic beverages from a designated walk-up window of properly licensed establishments, that's what I'm saying.
Ordinance number twelve of twenty twenty-two, in ordinance of the city of Port Allen providing for the revision of section ten dash one of chapter ten of the Port Allen Code of Ordinances entitled Sale, Consumption, and Public Prohibited Exceptions for the purpose of allowing the sale of alcoholic beverages from a designated walk-up window of properly licensed establishment.
All right, Mr. Jones.
Yes, council, as you recall, when the proprietors of the new French Quarter daiquiris appeared several months ago, uh, they requested permission to install a walk-up window, because their building does not allow for a drive-through, uh, which is the current trend. Our orders at the time did not allow such a window to be installed, so Mr. Alvarez drafted a revision. And passing this ordinance, or, yes, passing this ordinance would prevent any establishment that is properly licensed for the sale of alcohol to also sell through a walk-up window.
And I mean, I, I, the reason why I'm, I, um, I'm vying for this, because if the pandemic did teach us anything, it taught us that you have to have more than one way to be able to generate business or business. Like, if your, if your doors have to close down and alcohol is what you sell and you don't have another option, hey. So, hey, we have to make sure we take care of our businesses as well, so they can thrive and strive even through pandemic situations.
All right, I got a motion by Councilwoman Lacy, second by Councilman Brown, any objections? Here we go.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Gordon?
Yes.
Ms. Hubble?
Yes.
Ms. La- Ms. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Revere?
Yes.
Most of the cases.
Thank you. Ten out of seventeen, combination proceed.
Close the house to tonight, uh, but none, none. Probably.
All right. Ten out of eighteen, alcoholic beverages permitted.
No, no, none of this.
Ten out of nineteen, announcements and correspondence, I have a couple of them. Uh, first one, uh, the Justice for Patrol Organization will be presenting a Stop the Violence event, uh, this Saturday at, uh, what we, start off with a parade at William and Lee Park at twelve noon. And immediately following will be a block forty-eight, at the, in the eight hundred block of Burberry Street. Immediately following the parade. Also, this weekend, Port Allen High School will have a homecoming parade Sunday, October sixteenth at one P M. And begin at the West Family Parish Tennis Corps. And, uh, north on Sixth Street to Rosedale Road. And to, uh, south on Jefferson, all the way to Court, we might have redirected Court Street because it's doing repairs, I don't know if it's gonna be finished by Sunday. By eleven o'clock, and then they come back up Sixth Street to end up with, end up at the tennis court. But that's their homecoming parade. And then, uh, last, no, it's the Halloween, uh, trick or treat hours, October thirty-first. Will be same at the Parish, five thirty P M to seven thirty P M.
Councilman Mary, you have the, um, council hall Saturday, also at Port on High, sponsored by the J. Committee, from eight forty-five to ten thirty. Ms. Stewart, J. Councilwoman. At Port on High School.
And what time?
Uh, I think the registration started at seven forty-five to, um, I think it's ending at ten thirty, I'm a clock. And the West Side hood all have their last home games Saturday also.
I think they have a couple events for Halloween, you know, like the Hallelujah Night, I have the first Baptist church, uh, also live there, they have, they have like a Hallow- Hallelujah Night too. Some things kids will get involved in.
I have a, uh, announcement.
Um, I am one of three candidates running for West Family School Board District Five, and I am hosting a trumpet treats at William and Lee Park on October thirtieth from three to seven. Um, not asking the city for anything, asking for you to come out. But, um, it has, it will go out to the schools tomorrow, so, uh, Port Allen Middle, Colton Elementary, and Port Allen Elementary students in our district.
Mr. David?
October thirtieth from three to seven at William and Lee Park.
Chair, I donate two, um, candy or something to her. Oh, keep my candy in.
I don't wanna ethics violations.
Uh, uh, it'll be a two dollar bag. Only two dollar bag.
Well, you state, um, principles while you pass it.
Right.
All right, ten out of four hundred.
Wait a minute, um, number of announcements?
Well, I have to handle two. Um, veterans on parade, gonna be November, Sunday, November sixth at one thirty. And they travel from Oaks down Jefferson, and it will end at the museum, here at Sam Martin Theater. I'd like to just do a shout out, you know, any entrance to the city is an impression that somebody gets. While this is outside of the city limits, I wanna say, uh, four fifteen interchange has had to get a lot of work done to clean up and everything. Councilman Joseph out here has been instrumental in that behind the scenes, he's been working on that for months. And I just wanna say thank you, Gary, for what you're doing, I know you're continuing to do things, it's a long uphill battle, but he's done a lot, he's got a lot doing over there.
Thank you, Ms. Hubble, yeah, we try to just keep it clean in that area, you know, to, literally, go to, it's, it's, that's good for the set right there.
I appreciate what you've been doing.
Thank you, Joseph.
A lot of people know what you're doing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Service.
All right, here that's it.